All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order Tuesday, December 17th. It's our second school board meeting of the month with the primary focus on our budget. But we will begin tonight's meeting with agenda. Are there any items to remove from the consent agenda, commissioners? All right, seeing none, I would like one minute, a motion to approve the agenda. And then I'd like, are there any items on the regular agenda that we would like to move?
Yeah, Chair Wool, in consultation with you, I would like to propose that we strike item six, seven, and eight this evening. That would be the update on political campaigns with, on the BHS campus, the superintendent hiring update, and the French immersion update. I would need a second.
Second.
Commissioner Fisher, thank you. So, any discussion, all in favor of striking items six, seven, and eight? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Commissioner Wick. Then I'd like a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll so move.
Commissioner Wick, a second. Thank you, Commissioner Walts. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the agenda has been approved. Next is public comment.
Jonathan Fabian. Up on deck is Robin.
Gillian.
Gillian.
So Jonathan, the microphone is right down there with the table. Thanks. Actually, she should sit in the other seat. Yep, perfect. Like that. Not sure if the micro.
Just the chairs facing us would be great. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, BSD School Board. After much consideration, thought, and consideration, I have decided to apply for the school year 2020, 2020-21 student rep. This is more about, this is more than about just increasing student voice. I want to revolutionize education at BSD. I will do this with the power of my student rep position and Students for Change group combined. Watching last week's recording made me realize that I didn't really talk much about the Students for Change group. What I did mention is that the student, the group's main focus would be on student voice. The groups would, the group would be using a model called the XQ Super Schools Project. I don't know a ton about it, but there's more information on it by visiting on the xqsuperschools.org website. It features stories of how schools across the country have changed the curriculum to ensure that students are getting the most out of education. Students in this, in the Students for Change group will participate in thoughtfully conversations about a variety of education topics. I've also prepared, and the XQ Super Schools Project model works really well with the upcoming BHS BTC renovations. I've also prepared a memo that essentially outlines everything that I mentioned today. So that was pretty much it. Thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Up next, Robin. On deck is Alicia.
Hi, welcome, Robin.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for allowing a public comment time. My name is Robin Gillian, and I am a parent of a sophomore at Burlington High School. I'm also the Director of Aviation and Professional Pilot Technology at Vermont Technical College. I'm here tonight to talk to you as a parent and as a professional. I can tell you from a college academic point of view that our STEM technologies and our workforce opportunities are booming. In order to continue to create that type of workforce in Vermont, we need to make sure that we are very rigorous about how we approach our science, technology, engineering, and math classes. We have 100% placement for my pilots right now. That is amazing, and that has been for the last four years. We have a waiting list. Our engineering department is the same, and we're a very small college. I'm not talking to you from UVM or any of the other five, and they are also booming. But this is a Vermont college that takes Vermont kids. As a parent, I am concerned about the change in the requirement for earth science for ninth graders. Nothing against earth science, but the problem is that it bumped biology. And this created a cascade of issues for getting to honors or AP courses, which created issues for kids getting into certain colleges or STEM fields. I have a letter, and I beg your indulgence to read it, that is signed by 92 parents in this district who are also concerned about this issue at Burlington High School. I won't read the 92 names. You'll be receiving the email shortly this week, but I will read the letter. We are a group of parents concerned about maintaining a rigorous BHS science curriculum that provides students with choices and keeps doors open. Starting in the fall of 2018, earth science became a requirement for all BHS freshmen. As a result, it has become difficult for this cohort of BHS students to opt into a traditional biology, chemistry, physics, and AP science sequence. With the addition of earth science, there are now only three remaining years of those four classes. Taking the trio biology, chemistry, and physics provides students with a particularly strong science foundation and is a requirement to enter science and engineering majors at many colleges. Taking an AP class in addition to that trio provides our students with an additional choice to dive more deeply into a scientific area of interest. Among us, we have come up with a couple of possible ways to provide students with this flexibility. Given that earth science is taught in seventh and eighth grade, allow BHS freshmen to choose between earth science and biology. Number two, allow BHS freshmen to double up and take both earth science and biology at the same time. Note that we are aware that doubling up is not ideal, but if doubling up is required in order to complete the sequence, it's easiest to do that the freshman year. As this was rolled out, it wasn't obvious to me as a parent, even though we were asking what we thought were all the right questions, that the sequence was going to result in not being able to take AP classes. And yet, we are still continuing to advertise that we have these available, but the sequence is not allowing it to be available. So I ask you, as you're starting your budgeting, that we look at science and make sure that we maintain this academic rigor for Vermont and for Burlington High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, welcome, Alicia.
Hi, I'm Alicia Cunningham, and I am joining Robin in this discussion around the importance of making sure we have a really rigorous science curriculum at Burlington High School. Historically, Burlington High School has had a very rigorous set of courses for students, and as a parent of, for, one of whom's a sophomore, one of whom's in eighth grade, one's in seventh, and one's in fifth. I have a vested interest in making sure that we continue to, to give our kids the opportunity to take a really rigorous science curriculum so that they then have these options when they graduate from high school about what they can pursue. One of the things that came to my attention when my daughter first started at BHS, she was actually in the first class where earth science became a requirement for ninth graders. She's now a sophomore, so it's really, we're kind of only a year and a half into that transition. And as I looked through the course catalog, and I've spent a lot of time looking through the course catalog to kind of figure out how sequencing works, as I've looked through the course catalog, I was dismayed to realize that in order for kids who are interested in a really rigorous science curriculum, and traditionally, a really rigorous science curriculum has included biology, chemistry, and physics, if you want to do all three of those, and you are required to take earth science freshman year, that leaves you with not a lot of space in your schedule for an AP science class, which really seems like a shame. If you're really interested and excited about science, and so much so that you've decided to take the trio of biology and chemistry and physics, to then say, "Well, sorry, you can't take an AP class because there's no more room in your schedule," that seems really, really unfortunate. So you say you've got the trio of biology, chemistry, and physics, plus earth science, that's four classes, four years, so you kind of have to figure out, well, where are you going to fit that AP class in? It is really challenging to ask kids to double up. And as I've watched my daughter get older, and as I've talked to other people who have upper class juniors and seniors, it gets even more challenging to double up in a class. And so, so when, when other parents and I kind of looked at this issue, we really did come up with those two possibilities that Robin read from the letter, which are this question of whether earth science does need to be a requirement for freshmen, because it does then kind of squish the rest of the curriculum into those three years. And if it is something that needs to happen, or if it's kind of temporarily something that needs to happen while we look at other solutions, it seems to me that the doubling up that might need to happen for some kids would be best, is best if it happens freshman year, because it gets more complicated as they get older and start taking additionally kind of more rigorous classes. What, what I'd like to back up and mention is, is that when we attended the freshman orientation spring before this group of, of students started freshman year, we were actually originally told that they would be allowed to double up in earth science and biology, and then we were told later that that wasn't going to be possible. I don't understand all of the reasons for that. Maybe there were a variety of them, but, but there was some sense that it had to do with staffing issues around science, and whether there actually would be enough science teachers to teach the honors biology plus, or regular biology, honors or regular biology plus, or science to all the freshmen. And so that, that was originally offered as a solution when people were concerned about this issue, and then it was withdrawn as a solution before, before the kids got to freshman year. So I'm hoping that we can take another look at that, because I do really think it's important that we continue to offer a rigorous science curriculum for, for all of our kids, and especially those who are particularly interested in science and engineering and math. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to speak at public comment?
All right, seeing none, we will move to the superintendent's report. Item, no, excuse me, item four, approval, oh, public board reflection, sorry. Item B, three B, board reflections. Would any commissioner like to have a reflection? Commissioner Vontchik.
I would like to thank the parents that came and spoke up about the science curriculum at BHS. I don't know if this is supposed to be embarrassing, but I had no idea that that curriculum change had occurred. I received an email about it beginning of last week, and then I definitely believe that our kids should be given the opportunity to take AP science and be competitive to enter colleges, that we're making a big mistake by getting rid of this option, and I will fight to preserve sciences at the high school in Burlington.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Sowers?
I would just like to, to echo what Monica just said, and I also, I have a freshman right now who's experiencing that same thing, so I know exactly what you're talking about, and we've had to look at his schedule and see what he, how he could do it. So I understand your frustrations and your, your concerns. Thank you.
I just want to thank all those who came in to speak at public comment tonight. I really appreciate it.
All right. Seeing that, we'll close board reflections and move to item four, approval of the consent agenda. We already approved it, so.
Oh, are we voting on the consent agenda now?
Yes.
Yeah. I'll move to approve it. Chair Wool?
Second. Commissioner Carey, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the consent agenda has been approved. Item five, superintendent's report, FY '21 budget workshop.
Thank you, Chair Wool.
Thanks.
I wanted to thank the board for taking his time and dedicate to the budget process, because it's critically important for us to align with our goals and priorities and communities to kind of report. I'm wondering, I think we're missing, we're missing a few for maybe, right? Anyone?
Eric and Martine.
Kathy.
Kathy. Three.
All right. So I'm going to, I'll ask Liz at some point, if I'm a joint one of the groups, we're going to do some group activities. I think we've got a spot here, three, two, we've got three, three, three there, so that's good. Right, so last week, we, was it last week we had a board meeting? Yes, it was last week. We had a board meeting, and we had an opportunity to go through a number of areas in terms of, on the, on the budget. We heard from some staff around some of the proposed investments, and board members had an opportunity to have conversations around what they thought of them, and also had some ideas in terms of how to move forward. Post that meeting, had conversations with the chair. The chair directed myself and Bertha Labrie to look at the input from those past few meetings, and to look at a process for today, to lead us, because we have to have some decisions made today in order for Nate to do some homework over the holidays, so we can come back with a budget in January. So I'll beg your indulgence, because I might push you a bit today in terms of conversations. We'll give you some latitude to have conversations, but we're also going to steer the conversation towards decision-making, so we can get what we need today to go to the next step. You'll have another opportunity in January, but we have to have a few things kind of put in place, and then we'll be able to resolve that, right? So, so far, I think we've given you quite a bit of information, starting with Nate's budget presentation around all things budget, the basic, and also the budget document. You've had that. We've done some information on numbers. We've done some information on the investments and what's not investments, and also Nate presented last week, the status quo. We did nothing, you know, the increase to our budget. So you've gotten quite a bit, and so today, we're going to kind of move to the next step. And I wanted to give you a little bit of a quick review of some things that we've done we want you to consider, and then I'm going to pass it over to Nate, and we're going to try to push through the, the workshop. So if you turn to the next slide. Right, so this is a quick overview. We're going to do the quick budget priorities, and this is some context of conversations we've had already, and that's going to take about 10 minutes. Presentation, budget presentation. We still have staff to speak to some of the items we haven't had a chance to do yet, and it's going to be a push-out, because you're going to have an opportunity to ask questions in a different format, where you can have more dialogue. We just want to give them a chance to do that, and that's the carousel piece, right? In the carousel, we are going to have three different positions, and Nate's going to explain it as we go through. We're going to have three different spots, but there is one area of carousel that's dedicated for board input. That is where the board can contribute some ideas that are not already listed in our investments, that you think should be considered. Could be French immersion, could be science teachers, could be whatever you think is appropriate at that point to add to the compendium of, of conversations. And then there's some numbers pieces that we're going to prepare, we're going to share with you, and Nate's going to try to guide you, to give you some background information, so we can give us direction around targets to develop some budget areas. And then we're going to go in exact session, because we need some information from you. I don't know why that's up there. And then we'll be able to talk about that as we move, as we move forward, right? And so I think we've, a lot of enough time, so we're going to try to give you a good talk time within your groups, but at the end of the day, get the, the goals out. Next slide. Right, so I wanted to start with, you know, in the budget process, in the last few years, when we presented budget in, in terms of staff as well, too, we've always tried to align our investments with our strategic goals, right? We spent considerable, considerable time, about four years ago, community consultations, staff consultations, working over a year to eventually get to these values and these needs, and it clustered around inclusive teaching and learning, ethical climate and culture, and sustainable finance and facilities. So those are the big buckets. So we will eventually be able to incorporate these items that fit with these strategic goal areas, right? Next slide. Just to bring you back, last year, our principals and administrators went through a couple of months of dialogue to do some analysis around their schools and what their needs were, and they had to collaborate and come to consensus around what are the major priorities for our budget. And we looked at it in terms of, not just for this year, this is long-term, right? For the next two or three years, what should we focus on? Because why would you have that conversation over and over the same year? If it's important this year, you want to continue that. And you can see, we identified early learning intervention, reduced achievement gap, restorative practice, social-emotional behavioral learning, strategic goal alignment, federal and state mandates. We haven't had much conversations about that, but at the staff level, there are things we put in the budget that we know we must do, some compliance things that we say, "We have to do this," and we put, some of that's already in, baked in the budget budget, because it's carryover, but there are some things that may be coming up there new that we're going to say, "We need this because in order to meet this compliance piece," right? Right, and so we did a workshop last year, shared that information with the, with the board in terms of what the staff had done, then the board went through their dialogue and came up with some budget criteria pieces, and this is what helped make some decisions last year in terms of, these are the things we're going to focus on. And if you look back between the two slides, at the end of the day, they, they correlated pretty well, right? So I think the first three or four things were almost exactly the same. Go back to the next one, and then at the end, it was a little bit different, right? We had early learning, achievement gap, restorative practices, social-emotional behavioral learning, student-centered, and opportunities for higher achievers. If you, those of you around last year probably remember that, remember we were talking about that? And so that was where it came out. So that really gave a really good coherence to our criteria, because you could see what staff had said and what the board had done during their conversation, and there was some good alignment there. So that was good. Next slide. And then this year, the board has done some work and also provided us with three new budget priorities, right? So we also consider that, we have to consider that, because these are priorities that the board has given us, so we have to consider that in the decisions that we make, right? These three areas. Next slide. And that's it. You can go back to one. So all those pieces, you know, we kind of consider in making decisions in terms of the conversations that we've had, many hours of conversations to identify that these are the priority areas that we should be investing in. So hopefully that'll give you some context when you start making decisions to go back and say, "Oh yeah, we talked about, you know, higher achievers. That's what, that was one of our focuses, so that, this particular item fits that," or, you know, "Something else we need that could, that could help fit." And that helps us keep that alignment and give truth to our strategic plan goal areas around the vision that we have and where we're going, okay? So we weren't going to do a lot of digesting on it, because just wanted to kind of bring it back to say, "Hey," and we can go back to those slides once you get into the conversation, if you want to see those again, but we wanted to kind of remind you where you have. Did considerable work last year, didn't want to lose that. We should be carrying that over, and if it wasn't, if early learning was important last year, it's important this year, right? So it shouldn't be like starting from scratch. Okay, and that was good. I did that short time, right?
You're, yes, you're on time.
All right, Nate, it's all yours, buddy.
All right, I need to reset my timer for the next round. So the next round, we wanted to give each of the directors and staff who haven't had a chance to discuss their budget areas, just a couple minutes to briefly go over what it is that they put on the recommendation list. If you remember, you first saw these as part of the presentation that we did back in November, but we didn't actually present them. We kind of stopped after the school, kind of more school-based ones, and then we provide a little follow-up memo. So this is just to give everybody their, their two minutes, a moment in the sun, so to speak. We're going to follow this, as Yael mentioned, with the kind of carousel approach, where you'll have a chance to probe more deeply with that, say, with the same staff as you move around the room. So this is the part for questions. That will come up later, and the hope is that actually gives you a little chance to dig, dig a little more deeper, because it's not part of the whole group discussion. You have a small group discussion on that topic. So with that said, first up is Stephanie Phillips on the curriculum budgetary ideas, and Bonnie, do you can just click through until we get to the curriculum section. All this material is seen before. Here we go.
All right, great. So as Nate mentioned, I have more details that I'll share with you when we do the carousel on each of these, but just to give you a, a quick overview, after talking with principals and teachers, these were the top three that I'm bringing forward under the curriculum department. The first one is the instructional coach. This is the position that the board approved in the fall. It's a 1.0, shared between SA and IAA, so I want to be able to retain that moving forward. $25,000 for substance abuse prevention. We have substance abuse prevention counselors at both middle schools and the high school. There are some potential issues with grants that have expired or may expire, and I have more of those details that I can share with you during the carousel to get into the specifics. And then the third one is to continue our work with early literacy. With budget funds that you all approved for the current year, we were able to really launch a very strategic approach to early literacy, offering things like Jolly Phonics and Orton Gillingham to a number of teachers in the last 18 months. And so this money that I'm asking for here, along with what we may find out we have available for grant funds in the spring, would allow us to continue those literacy initiatives and potentially partake in, in another offering that Stern Center is interested in having us partner. It's called Lead to Read, that is having some very promising results, and connects very well with our closing the achievement gap and focus on early literacy. So those are priorities for the curriculum area, and like I said, I have many more details that I'll share with you during the carousel.
Great. Thank you, Stephanie. Next is Karen Vogel for the data team requests.
Hi. I don't know where I should go here. That's fine. Stand right here.
Sure.
Hi. So for us, the database reporting specialist is a position that will help us absorb the, the new requirements of state reporting, and I've talked about that before, but we have the new state report, the state longitudinal data system, and it's just a huge reporting lift for us. So it's really taken over like an FTE and more out of our student data manager and my time. So we're hoping to get someone in to really help us with that, and we have a temporary position this year that I was here speaking about not that long ago, so we're hiring for that, and then we're just hoping to continue that into next year. So that's the main thing. And then the other ones are just, you know, project support in terms of, and tools, just sort of the cost of doing business with, you know, things as they're evolving and moving, and when we need, you know, software add-ons and reporting tools, and sometimes the ability to hire someone to do a big project. Like right now, we have a huge student contact migration project that we have to do. So it's nice when we have these projects stacking up that we are able to just get some support with that. The data entry support is something that is more related to registration, enrollment, parents registering and enrolling their students and completing the annual student update, and some other data entry needs that we have. So I'm happy to talk more about it in our groups.
Thanks, Karen.
Okay.
Good work. All right, next up, Sparks. Need to talk about safe and inclusive schools. Sparks, the first two presenters have all been within time. Just wanted to put that out there.
Good evening, and thank you. So what this is, we've never had a budget for the second part of my work, the safe and inclusive schools, which would mean development for staff, putting signage throughout the schools, and really looking at alternatives to suspension. One of the things that we did say in the district as a priority, keeping all kids in school and engaged in learning. So as we look at the $100,000, that would be for facilities. As we look at the $50,000, that would be more for the development and safety initiatives that we are trying to implement in the district. Part of that will also be used for the work that we are going to be, well, we already are required to do with the Department of Justice. There's a lot of systems and foundations that we have to put in place that involve students and parents, so a lot of that work is going to be developing initiatives for students and parents to include them in the work, and really creating structures for parents and students to be included as we look at annually bullying, harassment, training, and aligning this work with the district's work around restorative practices. And I look forward to sharing much more with you in the round robin. Thank you.
Great. Next up, that was me, look at that.
Do I want to time you?
Okay, so Jason Evans couldn't be here tonight, but I'm going to talk briefly about information technology, but there's four items on here. Number one, thirty-five thousand dollars for the Voight phone battery backup. One of the great things about moving to the Voight system was we were able to put phones in places, in classrooms and other places across the district that never had them. So, we really increased the access to phones in the event of emergency. One of the elements though of that is, these phones require a battery backup in the event of a power loss, so we don't have that capacity with these phones. So, the goal here would be to provide that battery backup so that even if the power went down in the facility, those phones would still be operable. Number two, the hundred thousand dollars, that's an estimate to maintain our device ratios that we have. So, we went to one-on-one devices at the secondary level, and we have approximately four to one at the younger grades. A lot of those devices were purchased through grants and other opportunities when kind of going to one-on-one devices became popular in education. So, we're now at a point where we need to build sustainable funding into the budget in order to maintain those devices because, of course, kids are tough on those devices and they wear them out. The two others here, there's been a little bit of chatter in the news, if folks have followed the news on this, in terms of opportunities to do various degrees of kind of online and digital safety investments. What we have right now is just a software that allows devices to restrict access to certain types of, probably called classifications of websites. So, this is not like the really more encompassing social media monitoring, this is not that, this is something worth discussing at the board level. This is just for software to kind of restrict some of that access to certain websites.
All right, and next is Marty.
All right. Hi, everybody. So, we are proposing to replace one of our aging school buses. So, we have three 2011 school buses. The life expectancy of a school bus in Vermont is roughly eight to ten years. These three buses were all purchased at the same year, so if we're not proactively replacing these buses, we're going to find ourselves needing to replace all three of those buses in the same year. So, what we're proposing this year is to rather replace that bus for another bus, is to instead replace that bus with two vans. Couple reasons why we're thinking of taking this approach. One, you're probably aware that it's a national trend that there's a huge shortage of school bus drivers, so it's very difficult to find people who are interested in getting their CDL bus endorsement. So, it's been difficult for us to be fully staffed in order to provide the number of routes that we budget for. So, by replacing that bus with some vans, this would allow us to hire drivers that donate their CDL and school bus license. The other purpose why we see a huge benefit in utilizing vans is, well, currently we're only operating four bus routes. We actually, because we're down a driveway typically, operate five. So, we have eleven different properties, all with basically the same start and end time. So, all of the students that are, that start school and are dismissed at the same time, we cannot obviously pick those students up at the same time with four or five buses. So, having more vans in service would allow us to be at more locations at the same time. So, what that would impact is adding two FTE drivers. So, what we're proposing is ninety thousand dollars for two vans and two FTEs, which equates to roughly ninety-five thousand dollars. So, the other thing that we're proposing for the property services department is, if you probably remember last year, we budgeted funds to work with a consultant to look at a security system design. We are currently working with Margolis Healy to look at a district-wide security system design. We are at the preliminary stages of the work we're doing with Margolis Healy, but we want to put forward some money to next year's budget to implement that security system. So, based on, you know, some preliminary rough numbers that we received from Margolis Healy, we're proposing to put forward three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that, the start of the implementation for that, that district-wide security system. And we'll flush that out as we continue to work with Margolis Healy to come up with that design throughout the rest of the year.
Okay, thank you, Marty. Next is Russ Eller to discuss climate culture investment.
Hi, thanks. So, in, over the summer, Yau asked me to sort of reconstitute the climate team, which had put out the survey in the previous year, and to create an additional path forward for fixing climate in the district or addressing climate in the district. So, I said, I don't want to do this without a budget and without a team, and he said, tell us what you need. So, we put together a team, a very intentional team of teachers, paras, union representation, administrators, other staff, were very intentional about including food services, pre-K and after-school. And so, we digested again that climate data that everyone has looked at, and we looked at key areas that we wanted to focus on. And for us, that team is how do we address district relationship climate? So, we did a carousel ourselves, looking at what would be some low-hanging fruit that we could start to tackle over the course of the next eighteen months, and how do we work with Nathan to maybe get some of that money this year, but also how do we really begin to budget for it on a yearly basis, do things such as staff appreciation, which right now comes out sort of willy-nilly out of different budgets, employee well-being, how do we look at some different benefits? So, that can all come up in the carousel.
Great, thank you, Russ. And with the anchor leg, Dee Anderson Brown, to discuss each of our investments.
So, my ask is regarding performance, performance evaluations, professional learning or PD, professional development, also absence management, all in an integrated system that we're currently utilizing called Talent Ed. It would be opening up additional modules. I'm happy to talk to you in detail about what this means. Also, looking at a product like Safe Schools that has an online cloud-based professional development platform where we can get some of our mandatory trainings done. We don't have to create the content or track updates, the company does that. Power School recently, who owns Talent Ed, recently bought Schoology, which is also another company who does online training for educational K to twelve schools. And there's an opportunity for us to become less paper-based, more uniformed with our performance evaluations across all our employees, so.
Great, thank you.
Was I the quickest?
You were among the quickest.
Okay. It's that um that got me.
Marty was the only person to exceed his allowance.
Okay, so that wasn't intended, intended to answer all your questions, obviously, but what that was intended to do was to kind of refresh your memory and provide additional detail on, as to the nature of these requests. Now is the opportunity where we're going to split up in groups and do a little carousel to give you the chance to probe more deeply on these. And we've set up a few corners of the room here with the posters so that you can be reminded of what the items are that the directors that are in that area are speaking to. So, over here, we're going to have Stephanie and Karen. In this corner, we're going to have Marty and Dee and myself, and across the way, Sparks and Russ. And then we need, or we have and we need, we're going to do one more station. I'm not sure where it's going to be, maybe on the boards.
So, we're going to have one more station over here. But what we're going to do is, we're going to put you into four groups, and we want individual groups, and we want to practice, and hopefully we're able to have a good idea. So, first thing I'm going to ask, if you can number off to four, right? One, two, three.
Four. One, two, three, four.
One, two. Perfect, okay. So, all the ones are going to start over there, curriculum, no, don't go yet, don't yet, don't yet. All the ones over there. And all the twos are going to go to safe, inclusive schools and climate and culture. And all the threes will be over here, property services, human resources, infrastructure technology. And Bonnie, Bonnie and Noel just arrived, so the board, this will be the board table. This is the, this is the rotation where you get an opportunity to say, hey, I think that we should also add whatever, A, B, C. If you can also align it with one of the priorities, that would be great because that would help the rationale in terms of where you put this. So, we'll have two people here to give you that information, and also, at each station, this is where you get a chance to ask questions. Noel wasn't here last week when we did the high school stuff, so you can take the opportunity to ask some of those high school questions while you're here as well, too, okay? So.
We put the priorities up there?
Yep, we'll get them, we'll get them back up. Okay, we'll give you a few seconds to get set up, and then Nate will start the timer.
We're not members of the public, but we've come to participate. How are they allowed to rotate as well?
I think this is a board, this is a board meeting, go through. If you want to do, an opportunity for members of the community to kind of give some input, let's do the rotation, and then maybe we can give them an opportunity if there's time. Don't forget, there are decisions the board has to make tonight.
Input or observation?
Observation.
Observations.
Just like listening to the.
Oh, listening to the conversations.
It's a public meeting, I would think that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, it's fine. Liz?
Did you already say what decision the board has to make tonight?
It's a good question. That was on the, that was on the agenda side, but we should just revisit it. So, specifically, what we're going to be talking about, what we are going to be talking about at that point is to come up with some financial targets that will allow us over the next, a couple of weeks before the next board meeting, to take all of the investments that you've looked at and package them in ways that meet a couple of the scenarios. So, you're kind of giving the target number, and then we're going to go back and based on the lists and the priorities, put them into kind of packages, like, okay, this is a one million dollars worth of new investments package.
So, are we not reducing any costs? We have no information about reduction.
Well, we're not, we're not getting there. We're going to eventually get there. So, Nate, the next stage after this is going to be the numbers piece, and we can talk about that. We're trying to get through people step by step, and we're eventually going to have to make some decisions. We haven't asked that question, but you'll get that opportunity, right? It's not that everything up here is going to happen, but we're just kind of digesting it at this point. So, I'm going to give you about thirty seconds to get to the stations, and then we turn to the, fourth biggest, do it. Let me turn to the chair. How do you want the members of the public to participate in this carousel?
I think a listening tour, correct? And then follow-up with individual ward, your ward representative, your commissioner, with individual concerns.
So, do you want to match up with a group when the groups are going around?
I think with their ward, their ward representative.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay, so people heard that back there who were interested? Okay.
Admins, where's, where's the front?
Myself.
Okay.
There's actually three of us.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
So, okay, ready, go.
Four, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for indulging us in that. I hope you had some good opportunities to have some dialogue from each of the groupings. We're going to transition to the next phase, where I think we're doing well, time, hopefully we can get through everything we need to do. We'll have time to open it up in terms of if there's anything else that you think we can accomplish today. But before we go, just a quick debrief around this, and I'm going to start with ten-second comment from our presenters from their experience, something that you heard or something that impacted you. Let's start with Stephanie and curriculum and data people there.
So, I just really appreciate that we have this carousel opportunity because it allowed me to clarify in more detail than I can when I'm just talking off slides, and also to have a two-way communication. So, I found this to be a valuable way to talk about priorities.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to group that was here. Anyone want to take that?
Sure. I think we heard some, it's quick questions, we had some good ideas also from board members about ways that we might want to try to support some of the investments without having to bear the full cost, you know? So, I think that there are some other ideas that we can use to potentially adjust the proposals in the future.
And Noel, you were here taking on board member suggestions and conversations and questions around high school materials, any comment?
Yes, I just thought it was a great opportunity to be able to answer questions about what we don't know, what we do know, and just to have an opportunity to talk about the complexity of staffing and all that needs to be considered when you're looking at hiring additional staff, looking at student course numbers, looking at AP opportunities on the end. But I think the priority is to do what we can in a fiscal, which is often the way to serve the needs of all of our students.
Solved all the, all the issues, right? So. And last but not least, this group over here, the safe, inclusive, and the climate culture, anyone want to take that?
I really value the opportunity to back and forth and the richness and the questions that board members have. So, it gave me an opportunity to really start thinking about some of the pieces that we proposed, but it was a great opportunity, and I really appreciate it having that opportunity to really share information back and forth.
Thank you, staff, for taking the time to come and do that. And I want to give, with just popcorn at each table, maybe a board member wants to make a comment based on their experience or anything they want to put into the atmosphere, we'll take away. Why don't we start with the front table here? Anybody from this table?
I'll just say, it was very informative. I learned a lot from this presentation over here and from the proposal for an alternative placement for suspensions. I had some questions and they were answered.
Good, thank you. Middle table?
I agree. I think this is, this is so helpful to ask a lot of questions and get the detail, and I think it's kind of what we were all looking for, was more communication and more understanding of each point, so.
Liz, I know you're not in one of these groups, but we'll give you the table back there. Anything you want to say? Liz?
It was really efficient, yes. I really appreciate it.
And last but not least, this group here.
It was good to be free from Robert's rules.
Yeah.
Whoever that Robert guy is.
Okay, so great. I heard lots of good conversations and some really good questions that probably will help us in the next stage. It really helps, I'll tell you, it really helps when we get a chance to hear the board's needs and desires because it does give us a perspective in terms of when we have to do our next steps, right? Because we kind of understand, oh, this is what they're talking about, even just really understand what you're trying to get at. We want to provide something that the board's going to feel proud of, and we're going to feel good about, and be able to eventually take to the community. So, that's helpful to have that authentic dialogue. So, thank you, and thank you, Karen. I know you were not feeling totally well tonight.
No, no, I'm good, I'm fine.
All right, good.
Can I also just thank the staff for, you probably had the same conversation three or four times, okay? But I really do appreciate because it meant we could have conversations, right?
So, Nate, next stage.
Okay. Moving on.
Bonnie, you can advance the slides.
If you just go to the end of this section, please. So, we wanted to just provide some kind of budget trend information to put, to give you some context for the discussion that we're going to have after this little section. So, I created a couple of slides here that just have some recent budget tax change information. I won't go into all the details, and when we have more tax rate variables, we can discuss the tax rate implications specifically, but I wanted to highlight just three of the kind of things that come up in our budgeting process generally, one being the total budget change. That's a number that ultimately we have to put a total budget figure on the ballot. Here we go. And so, but that number doesn't as directly link to things like the tax rate because the total budget includes funds for other things such as grants that come and go, and so there's more, there can be variability in that number that isn't as directly related to the decisions that are made, you know, in terms of programming that we're adding or removing. Education spending is really the number that is driven by the decisions about the items that we're discussing tonight, and it's that education spending number that's one of the variables in the tax rate formula that ultimately produces whatever tax rate change we have. So, it's just kind of important to understand those distinctions and also understand that because they're, they're not all directly related, you see different percentages, for example, across the board. You can have years where, you know, a half percent increase in education spending results in a tax rate change of over four percent, and another year where it's more like three, three percent. So, just gives you a sense that it's a complicated system, and you don't control all of the variables in that system. The variable that you do control ultimately is that education spending variable.
Nate, based on the data that we have already so far, which one of these scenarios do you think is more like this year?
That's a good question. I think that this year, based on what we've seen already. I think that this year, based on what we've seen already, I'd have to go back and look at it. We got some good news in terms of the Tax Department letter that showed that the yield is increasing, but that in and of itself means that you could spend more money for the same tax rate. However, we have preliminary equalized pupils, show our equalized pupils going down a bit, which has the opposite effect. So I'm not sure, frankly, where we'll come out with that yet, and it's also, as I said, those equalized pupils are so preliminary, I think there's a few large districts like Cal Burlington that weren't in the count, so it's hard to say for sure. I'm not sure yet, but we will, we'll have much better information come January.
The tax rate change number that you have there, is that what you put in the ballot? Or is that the actual?
No, that's the actual.
Okay. Thanks.
So does this mean that in fiscal year '17, there was a baseline budget amount, say it was like 78 million? And then the change over the prior year was 2.6 million? But the actual amount that the board added to the budget that year was 304,000?
Oh, it means that the amount of our, the amount of the education spending, the amount that we need from the state only went up by 304,000.
Okay, so the ed spending change is the amount we need from the state?
Right, essentially. Education spending is the amount of money we get from the education fund. Typically, that's more driven by board decisions.
From the ed fund?
Yeah.
But, so that was like $11,000 per equalized pupil?
That's not quite the way the formula works, and we can talk about it in more detail, but essentially, the education spending number is whatever we, as a community, ask and vote for it to be. It's not based on our, so, I'll probably, I don't want to get too bogged down in it.
Yeah, because it happens to be 304,000 one year and 3.1 million.
So, so if we add a lot of things to the budget, or we have costs that increase that we have to bear locally, by choice or by requirement, that number is higher. If we don't add much, that number is lower.
Gotcha.
Whereas the total budget can be impacted by just the loss of a big grant or an increase in grant revenue, because the feds give us more money.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff?
Nathan, when we approve our budget this year, presumably on January 21st, and there's that state mandated language that goes on the ballot?
Yeah.
And there's a blank with a dollar sign?
Yeah.
Is that, which column?
That's the leftmost column?
The total budget change.
Total budget change?
Got it. So when we're contemplating our ads and our total budget change, and then what's going to go on the ballot, at least we're all mindful now around the table that it's total budget change is the number.
Right. You're going to see total budget change, but you're also going to see spending for equalized pupil, which probably doesn't mean a whole lot to people on there as well, and how that growth, you'll see growth.
Can I just, that's a good question, Jeff, because that becomes misleading. I think we tried to add an extra line on the ballot itself, because the total budget change is different from the tax impact, right? Some people will see the budget change and think that's the tax rate change, but it's not.
But we don't know the tax impact until after the voters...
Well, yeah, well, you know, you know what happens. We will, by the time January comes, we probably will have a number, but you know that they keep changing it.
Yeah.
So by the time you get your tax form, it's something different, right? So, but we'll be proposing, we'll be going out and saying right now the tax impact's going to be, it's going to be whatever.
Yeah.
All right, one more question on this?
This is a great contextual slide. Can we get this, are we going to be posting this onto...
Sure, we can post the whole presentation up that way. Yep. So I just want to jump one more slide, running a little long in this section, but I think we're doing okay overall. So I wanted to, I went back through a few prior years' budget presentations, not to look at what the total budget or even the education spending increase was, but just to look at kind of what we identified as new investments in the budget, right? So this doesn't mean that the whole budget went up by 1.7 million, it just means that we undertook new activities and initiatives and so forth in the fiscal '18 budget to the tune of $1.7 million. So we just wanted to again give you an idea of the last few years, what those, kind of what the scale has been roughly of new investments, because all of the items that we're talking about here today, that we talked about with principals and so forth, that's all about kind of like additional investments, new levels of service, that sort of thing. So, and we know that obviously that is a big number right now, and clearly that's more than any given recent year that we've made in terms of new investments.
So Nate, just to reaffirm this, so the, so these numbers are basically exemplifying what we're talking about today, the new investments. So last year, we did 2.3 of new investments, right? That's what the slide is.
Right.
So everything that is up here, is the too many?
No, 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 no. That was last year.
What was 4.6, 4.5?
So last year, last year we actually started at, I think it was like 6 million, and eventually we got down to like 2.3 million, and this year we started at 4 million, and so eventually we'll get down to something else, right? So it's just the...
Right. So, and that's really the significant portion of the agenda that we've kind of reserved time for now, is for you folks to have that conversation amongst yourselves of what are some target numbers? And Bonnie, if you could go to the next slide, just put the little notes here. But the idea of being that as a board, what we are looking for is for you to provide us with some direction with, so giving us a couple of target numbers, just makes them up to illustrate, right? You might say, you know what, we want to see what a scenario, what investments would you pick, given consideration to the priorities that have been identified both by staff and by the board? But what are the investments that you would pick to get to a scenario where we do $100,000, $1 million, $2 million worth of new investments, right? You folks come up with, we're saying, two targets for us, the idea being that we bring back in January those scenarios for you, at which point we can also give you an idea of what the tax impact is estimated to be, and we can kind of connect all of those items to the strategic plan or strategic priorities, so that you can kind of see how they further those goals. So are there any questions about the assignment and what we are hoping to learn from you tonight? Okay, well then, we'll turn it back over to board to discuss, and I will, I will be monitoring, I'll say, the time, but this is really important, so I don't want it to be rushed in that sense, so we will cut you off, but we will be mindful of the time, because I know that there are a few other items on the agenda that we want to discuss. Thank you.
All right. So at this time, discussion.
Do we want to discuss as a group, then? Is that what we're doing?
So we'll take, yeah, I think, don't you think we should sit at the table? Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll move the tables.
What are we doing?
We're moving together to sit at the table.
Okay.
I mean, and the goal here is to look at what we're, I mean, are we having...
Yeah, we're chairs, right. Whatever. Sure, come on in.
Really? We're all going to sit around that table?
No. I think we're pulling your guys' table.
Mike, are you going to call on people, then?
I, I don't know. What does the board think? Do you think we should just try and have a discussion?
Yes.
We could have a name-taker.
We have, go ahead.
Could we organize the discussion so we aren't just jumping all over the math?
Yes.
But have some categories?
So I think we go back to the three categories, the inclusive teaching, equitable culture, sustainable finances. Everybody in agreement?
The big rocks?
Mm-hmm.
Actually, what I would recommend, we just start with initial thoughts, right? Anybody just want to, got something bubbling off the top of their head that they want to, so Monica, you had a question about something that was sent?
Yes, so last week, we got this letter from Nate that talked about potential growth in the budget to sustain the current service level. And I guess some of this is going to depend on the wage increase, but wasn't that letter 4% of the budget?
Without doing anything.
Without doing anything. And then if we look at that chart that we just saw, FY '17, FY '18, last year, the increase was 4.4%. The total budget.
Nate, are you able to put up that slide, just the one that had those three columns?
Current services?
This is one more back?
No, no, one back one.
Actually, the one, that one.
But you know, there's changes drastically every year based on our CLA adjustment and state head format.
Well, not the total budget change.
No, the tax rate.
Just historically.
I'm talking about the total budget change. So this letter says that if we want to keep our current services, essentially, we're going to be spending 4%.
And so I believe...
Yeah.
That, scroll down a little bit?
That's to wages.
That's to wages, right? So if we negotiate on average a 3% raise, then it would be, and keep, and do no additions, it would be approximately a 4.2% budget increase.
Right. It's not just wages in that, other increases are factored in, but then the very, the one that you kind of really control more neatly is wages. On the second page, there's a discussion of other assumptions that were, that were made.
And that says the budget increase, right?
Right. That's kind of like the baseline. Yes.
Does that include healthcare?
Yes.
Yes.
The only thing it does not include is the healthcare changes resulting from the very, very recent settlement to the statewide health negotiations. That actually came out. But this, so this, this accounts for growth in the cost of the health insurance plans that people are on, which are going up about 13%, but in terms of what the new cost will be to Burlington as a result of that statewide settlement, we're just starting to kind of dig into that, so we don't have that answer yet. It will be something.
But it's going to be substantial.
Yeah.
I think to be determined, there will be some real costs. I think they'll be confined to some areas of our budget. Some staff already have largely the benefit that the statewide negotiation invisions, or the arbitration decision invisions. Some staff don't have nearly that benefit. An example would be our food service workers, but our food service is paid for through a separate funding source, so the impact won't all be borne by the general fund or by the taxpayers directly. So more to come on that when I, when I know more about it.
I don't think we should draw a conclusion yet as to how material it's going to be.
I do remember last year working more with the idea of what was going to be a projected percentage increase that we, you know, and then creating that to the financial...
Doesn't that come a little later, when you get more data from the state?
From a tax, from a tax point of view, yes. If you wanted to say tonight, we want a budget increase, right, you know, a certain percentage, we could kind of translate that into dollars, but if you said, we want a tax rate increase of X, Y, or Z, we don't quite have the variables we need to really know what that would translate into for dollars. So the hope is that when we come back in January with our scenarios, if you look at them vis a vis our estimated tax rates at that time, you can then decide, is that worth it, so to speak? Is that, are scenarios too high, too low? We don't expect you to just adopt one of them, we expect you to then work them to a point where you're satisfied.
But we're being asked tonight to come up with a number.
Two numbers.
One is the cash, the amount, the dollar amount.
I thought it was two scenarios.
You can, if you want to only do one, you certainly can, but we were thinking it would be more, as long lines of something that Jeff suggested at the last meeting, come up with a couple of targets for us, so that instead of having a list of $4.5 million of all this stuff, we could say, well, here's the list that we would recommend if you said, bring us back a list that adds up to $1 million. And here's the list we would recommend if you said, bring us back a list that had $1.5 million. And come January, you'll get to see kind of what's in, what we would recommend, will be in and out from those lists, and you'll also get a sense of what the tax impacts will be. So you can start to, you know, if you want to say, well, we're going to add another $100,000, or we're going to take away another $100,000, then you can maybe fine tune. The hope is that we can kind of narrow the discussion a bit, since right now it's pretty wide-ranging with all of the items.
And just to clarify, so right now we have an ask list of 4.465, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other?
So did you want to go around and do initial...
This is the ask list.
Impressions, reactions, just about the budget or about the questions?
We're not going around, just anything that just came up out of the carousel?
Mm-hmm.
We're not, we don't have to, we're not going to go around if you, you got something to say? Okay.
All right.
Oh, you want to say?
Well, I guess I'll start. I mean, a lot for me came up out of the carousel. One is I learned that the $50,000 is mandated by the DOJ agreement. We already have the database reporting specialist in the budget, because it was added this year.
Will you go slower, just commentate. So 50K is mandated in DNI, yep.
We don't have the database.
No. It was approved mid-year.
Not on an ongoing basis, but people added it to this year's budget.
We spent, we're spending money to, or going to be if we can get someone in to do that.
Going to be, right. So a portion of that is already in the baseline. It's not an entire new cost, because people already asked you to put it in this year's budget.
It wasn't built into the baseline budget decision. So we're funding it, we said, hey, we'll use the contingency.
Out of the contingency? Okay. So, okay.
25K for the data.
Or the contingency would have to be smaller next year.
Yeah, sure.
Similarly, the instructional coach.
Same thing.
Same thing.
Yeah.
So how much, so that's like 180,000 of the contingency is being spent on those two things?
Give or take, I can't remember what the total, probably less than that, given the timing of when we'll end up hiring and the level of the data position.
Right. So anyway, my overall reaction was that we would have needed way more data to, to make decisions than we have. One of the big chunks of data, one of the overall messages I heard this year is that teachers need a lot more behavior support and social workers in the schools and the classrooms in order to teach, but I don't, I, after six years, I've seen social workers come and go, and what happens is our enrollment goes down. Once we add those to the baseline costs, once we add them to our payroll, then that's an escalating cost. On the other hand, contracting with Howard, there's a caseload, so you can only get, you know, they can only manage a certain number of cases. So the data I would like to see is, how much would we have to pay Howard on a contractual basis versus hiring people and adding them to our payroll, which escalates every year this inordinate cost that is not sustainable in my view? And without that data, you know, compared to this very high need we have, it's very hard to make a decision. But to me, that data is critical because we have, you know, all of these costs, you look at kindergarten, preschool, and like, all of these costs are just to teach, like, teachers can't even teach without these supports. So to me, that's kind of a crisis, again, that is really just the state cost shifting social services onto the schools, which the rural schools can't support anymore because they're losing students by the dozen every year. So as a result, Burlington, unlike the rural communities, is not really losing that many students, but we are seeing an increasing number of social service costs, and to me, the big question for all of us and the legislators, how are we going to absorb social service costs just so teachers can teach? And that's a really big conundrum. So I would just like more data so that we can adjust that contract with Howard based on our enrollment needs, rather than just hiring people that, that we have to fire and we have a big crisis over firing people because of all the...
Liz, I just want some clarification. Howard would provide, which line items? I understand you mentioned...
Social workers, yeah.
So the middle school ask is for two social workers, one for each school, so... So the middle school ask is for two social workers, one for each school, so.
And high school has one, and then there's some in, and then, you know, can they provide behavior supports? Like, what can we contract for?
So, I, I know, can I speak? I know S, S and D associates, we contracted this year for the first time for special ed, intensive special needs, Nate, and that's worked well, because it's on a contractual basis, it's not hiring a staff with, into the contract, like one FTEs. And, you know, having met with them, they, you know, that's, it, it comes at a premium, but to Liz's question, you know, what, what are the costs of a Howard and an S and D and associates for special ed ISN workers, rather than adding these people to the budget and staffing them based on the ebb and flow of need and what would be most cost effective?
Would it be reasonable for whoever the right person is to answer Liz's question for the benefit of the board, which is, what are the pros and cons of, and is it realistic? Would Howard be able to offer this to us in a, in a substantively equivalent way?
Yeah, we can ask. I don't see why we can't ask him. I mean, it's more of a strategy question, but absolutely, like, we can ask the question if, if they would do that. And essentially, right now, they're limited in part, because we get a good deal from Howard, because Howard is able to get additional money, draw down additional, like Medicaid money, provided that the social workers they send to us work with the Medicaid eligible students. We could say to them, you know what, you're not gonna get the money from the feds anymore. We're gonna pay kind of full, but what does that look like? Can we contract for you with two or three or four, however, anymore, social workers paying kind of full price, but with fewer strings attached? Sure.
Nate, if there was one administration employee here tonight who was most expert in this matter, who would it be? I'm just curious, like, who would we ask this question of?
I would probably approach Howard Center about that with Laura Nugent, who knows more about the specific, like, ultimately, the contract we have for, the way it's set up right now, we kind of run it through Laura's office.
Yeah. Love to know, what would we gain, what would we lose?
You mentioned Medicaid, why couldn't it be a combination?
I don't know enough about Howard Center's rules to, to say. I just know that they have arrangements.
So they get the Medicaid and then we supplement for more hours.
Very possibly.
Yeah.
So, so we have, we have a number of things to discuss. My suggestion is, she's gonna take this, and we move on to something else. You guys okay with that?
Yeah, I want to add that I'm still super curious if IAPs were factored into the FTE formula, what that might look like as far as, because we talk about the ebb and flow, but if the money followed the student.
I'm not sure what you meant. I don't know if others.
Pure pupil, pure pupil.
Per pupil.
Per pupil spending.
But like, for example.
It's, but, but then we add to it.
No, I get it, but let's say like Noel's ask, among other things, is, you know what, philosophically, I'd like to top out my part, my less than one FTEs at one, because it makes a lot of sense. So is that what you're talking about?
I'm saying there's an obvious need for kids on the IAPs, and they are not a part of that monetary amount that gets formulated into the per pupil amount. Every service costs money. All of these things cost money. It ebbs and flows.
Yeah. Are you talking about a line item?
Well, let's let, let's let Nathan answer the question.
The money would go with the kid and, and be able to access certain, the line item stuff could be whatever, essentially, you know?
I'm not sure I totally understand, but I think, again, that the difference was internally, how we distribute funds. If we wanted to change, like, for our, the dollars that we send to each school, if we wanted to change that formula, we could.
You mean the equity formula?
Like, that the way we said, here's how much money each school gets, we could put another factor in for special, we could weight special ed students into that formula if we wanted to. And we can do that outside of the budget process. We can do that after we pass the budget. That's just a distributional question.
Nate, wasn't that equity formula primarily for, maybe there was a middle school component, but you gave us some numbers as to the elementary school, and it was a total of about.
Yeah.
Three hundred thousand.
It wasn't, right, I mean, yeah.
Not a big number.
It's not meant to provide all the services to special ed students, and I don't think under what Mr. Waltz is saying, that, that's the idea. But we can talk about that further. I would just say, again, that's more distributional, and what we really need tonight is to focus on, what are the kind of top line numbers, in addition of how much in terms of new investments, so that we can then come back to you folks with some scenarios to get there.
So before we get into trying to drive to a number, which is what the ask is, is there anything else that anybody has to, that they wanna, that's bubbling up after the carousel? Just gonna see if anybody else, so you guys have spoken, Mr. Carey?
Yeah, well, we're asked to come up with a number based on these asks. But we haven't seen a number based on what could be reduced. It seems to me that both of those topics are tied together.
So from the district, the district hasn't provided any reductions.
Right.
Could we just note your request, so that it doesn't put a complete halt to our discussions tonight?
Yeah, I realize that came later last year in the process. I believe it did.
We did make the ask last week.
And a year ago, you proposed, the district proposed cutting five hundred thousand dollars out of.
Central office.
Central office, non-instructional spending. Is that happening?
Yeah, we, I mean, we reduced our budgets, you know, in general by that, so that's.
And now we're putting it back in with the data person.
Yeah, I mean, those are some examples of the types of needs, where you, you manage to the point that you can, and then you have to look elsewhere.
Were we actually successful in getting to all five hundred, do you think?
What I'm saying is yes, because I made the budget with five hundred less. Whether at the end of the year, someone will say, shoot, or my staff will be like, we really need a new printer and we can't afford one, them's the breaks.
But so far, so good.
We've put in, we've said, yeah, there is less money to go around in those areas. So, yeah, and to the point of reductions, I mean, I feel like last, it's come up a couple times. It hasn't been clear to me that everyone said, we want you to come back with ways to reduce, but that can be part of this discussion and part of the direction to us, too, is like, give us some targets, give us some areas of service levels where you think that we should be focused on, where you think that we're providing more than we need to provide in terms of level of service, and we can go explore those, those areas.
Or one more category might be, are there any programs that are just not succeeding?
Sure.
Whether they're student or non-student, or, you know what I mean, is there anything that we've tried that we're like, yeah, it's not working so well?
Yeah.
I don't know.
All right, before I go back to Liz and Monica, anybody else? Monica?
I guess other stuff came up in my head. I just wanted to clarify, but at the end of FY nineteen, we had a one point four eight billion dollar surplus. And I guess it would be nice to understand why that happens, so that when we make a budget, we don't end up with a surplus. But I know some of that's impossible.
I mean, we're, and we're not, those things happen for a variety of reasons. I would remind you, given our budget size, that's, we're not talking about a very, very big percentage of our budget.
True.
You take a lot of one percent, you know, people spending within one percent of their budget, and you're, you easily get up to nearly that amount. And then when you have things like vacancies, because Marty can't fill his bus driver positions, or we have double keeping paras, you know, one of those bus driver positions we budget, there's fifty thousand dollars, just because we can't fill a position. So we take a one percent margin, you add a few vacancies, and, you know, we have turnover, we have vacancies, that stuff happens, and you get to that level pretty quickly. So I, I would, I wouldn't, from my perspective, it's like, I expect that we are in that range. If we, if I said, oh, two hundred thousand dollar surplus, I'd be like, huh, that's like, you know, we really cut it close. Yeah, I know, it is a big number, but in the scheme of our scale, it's not a big.
Glad we're on this side of that range than that side.
So my real question, though, is, you gave us this four point five million dollar spreadsheet, but not everything on that spreadsheet was represented here tonight.
Right. Tonight was focused on the items that we'd not been able to discuss before. You'd heard from the principals about some of the school-based instructional stuff. So when we talk about giving a target number, we're talking about a target that represents investments from that entire sheet, not just what you talked about tonight.
Okay. And then I just wanted to mention that the City and Lake Semester is not listed under high school, but just as its own thing.
Right, we were gonna bring that to the attention, and Liz's document as well, she outlined it, that that was not represented by any, by Noel or Matty Scheife, and wasn't on that Excel chart.
Wasn't on the, it's not on the four point four?
It is now, it's a new one.
I put it on there because we had a presentation, I didn't put it under the high school, because it wasn't one of the top high school.
Okay.
Yeah, so on that note with BCL, I really believe BCL is a model, and it has to be preserved, because it offers other opportunities for the high school in terms of just that choice and challenge, and, and kind of redesigning delivery of education. What I'm having, what I'm struggling with is that we hired a proficiency-based learning coach last year. So I'm not able to justify four full-time positions for eighteen students. If we're gonna pick up a Shelburne Farms position, and we have two teachers, and we hired a PBL coach last year, I don't see how we can justify another kind of person in that PBL role. And I'm also reluctant to pay for this Shelburne Farms position, even though I understand the importance of it. I just, I guess what I would ask staff for is just the assurance that that person will be available to more than just the Burlington City Lake Semester. If they've got their program figured out, I'm still not clear on why this person has to keep working with just that program. I'm, I'm supportive of using that person throughout the school. I mean, we've got, like, now we're talking about science and STEM. It seems like that's a huge opportunity for this person to share out kind of more of a proficiency-based approach to the STEM as well, or environmental science, you know, or earth science even. So I'm a little of two minds about this, wanting the BCL model to really be preserved, but looking at four full-time positions for eighteen students, it's just, I don't understand how we can justify that.
Liz, just to be clear, I'm only seeing one FTE at eighty-five five?
Well, that's great, so that means, that means there's been an adjustment. So I do support that.
Yeah.
I, I support that cost.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, and they had outlined it, what the contracted.
They had two.
Yeah, they had contractual through Shelburne Farms, one sixteen.
Yeah, but I would like to see that person be available for more than just this program, like.
What if it's true that that person is full-time with that program, meaning it, it literally requires full-time efforts? How do we also ask?
Why that's the case?
We should get clarity on that, because I wouldn't want to ask one full-timer to do two jobs, you know what I mean?
Well, and I tried to ask them that when they were there. I said, you know, can you be available to support other programs? And they said, yes, but it's, but then that, we, we only had two minutes. It was the two-minute round, so.
Got it.
Noel didn't talk about that tonight, did he at all? Did anyone ask Noel?
He did not ask me.
When you think about the Burlington Lake Semester, and you look at teachers and students, remember that the students are there all day long. So it's really like having sixty kids. The equivalent time spent with students would be sixty in the regular school.
Oh, no, that's for the teachers, absolutely. I'm talking about this Shelburne Farms person, or if this is the BHS-based person, I don't know who this is.
It's the community partner lead, sixty thousand dollars annually. I thought that was, you know, like, a salary benefit. So it was a sixty thousand dollar annual.
She's a, I'm pretty sure that is Sina.
This is an eighty-five thousand dollar cost.
But it equates to eighty-five, because it's the seventy-eight with benefits, and then seven thousand for the space rental. So they put in eighty-five, seventy-eight plus.
Oh, I see what you mean. So one FTE plus seven thousand is eighty-five.
So it's a VHS person, not the Shelburne Farms person.
It, no, it is a community, it's a community person.
So it's Burlington's person, not Shelburne Farms person.
Right, right.
Well, no, I thought it was Sina Daly, who's presently paid by Shelburne Farms, and they're saying, guys, we gotta get off of Shelburne Farms payroll, we gotta get on to the Burlington.
Can we ask?
Yeah, we can ask, but I'm reading it outline right here. Project Director from Shelburne Farms was seventy-eight five. A community partner from BSD was seventy-eight five.
So we're only paying seventy-eight five of the Shelburne Farms person?
It's not denoted. It's not denoted whether this is BSD or Shelburne.
My suggestion is, we take this offline and say, hey, Nate, and, and, yeah, we need some clarity on the costs for Burlington City and Lake.
Or the ask. What are they asking?
I put on, I put on their list, the, the part at the bottom of their sheet here, direct, direct through BSD.
Right, so that's Sina.
So I put that position and the extra.
But, but this expense contracted through Shelburne Farms, they, the ask was still for us to pay, correct?
They want us to pay for all, maybe I didn't, I didn't understand that, but I can, I can certainly update the sheet. I mean, that's easy, easy enough to do.
Could we just clarify with them what their ask is?
Sure.
Because when they brought the ask, it was one sixty.
What we got here, Nate put down a one FTE plus seven thousand dollars. And if that's their ask, then it's accurate, as to what their ask is, but I think their ask was like.
Yeah, I'll just double check, and then I'll, I'll update the spreadsheet.
All right. So I'm gonna say that we are twenty-one minutes in, and we need to start talking about total cost for additions, for new investments. So I'm gonna ask if anybody wants to start the discussion about what we think. The ask was for two numbers. So I'll open the floor.
So really, what we're talking about is these numbers, so then it's a process of elimination. We're, we're really, we're budgeting by these numbers, and then eliminating, you know, we're, we're not gonna say what we want, we're gonna say what we don't want. Does that make sense? Or what vein do we wanna go in?
Let me clarify what we're asking from you. We gave you that data, just to show you what we've done each year. Last year, after we did this, we put two point three in investments. That gives you a ballpark number. That's what we did last year. The year before, we did eight hundred fifty-two thousand. So that's what we're asking from you now. We're asking you to take anything off or add anything, just what are you comfortable with? Based on, you might say, hey, come back with a proposal of one point five million and one at two million, so, and then we can look at that. We don't have all the numbers right now to give you to say, you know, if you ask us to do a two million, we couldn't tell you that's gonna be a tax impact of X, whatever. But if you give us a range of how much you're willing to spend, then we could do some work, and by the time we come to January, we'll probably have more numbers to actually say, it may look like a tax impact of X. At that point, you can continue to have the conversation around what's in and what's not in. So you still have that opportunity to do that. You have to do all that tonight. What we need is a range, so we can actually put a package together and say, hey, look, for two million of investments, these are the things that we think should be ironed. And then it's up to you. You can say, that one's good, that one's not, let's add this, let's do this, and do all that kind of stuff.
And Yao, if, if there was a, you, you've asked for two numbers, would it represent a lot of work or not a lot more work, Nate, if we actually had like a third one, like a really low one?
You could do a three.
Well, if you can do a range, so if we do a high and a low, and you could do that, then you don't care.
Pepper in a little from the low.
Doesn't matter how many.
We did that last year, I think.
Sort of does, because what I envision, and what I think I've, well, what I envision is, so thi- this is what I'll call very sort of bottom up, right? We're going literally almost like one could spend all night here doing a line item veto here. But Yao's asking for something which is equally valid, I believe, which is a bit of a top-down number, so that he and his staff could then do their own best judgment of how we, of winnowing. And then they bring it back. So I'll just, so just to finish what I was gonna say anyway briefly, is my gut, because this is all gut, I think we have to realize, based on our numbers, but ultimately, it's gut, because we don't know what the tax impact is, would be to suggest, and this is just me, a one point five and a two point five million. Those would be, if I were the board member, a board of one, I'd say, give me that, but then could you also give me a point five million? So I'd be like, point five, one point five, two point five. And those are the three targets I'd wanna see, and I wanna see what he includes and doesn't include in each of those. And then I'm not obligated to accept exactly any of those three. If it turned out we wanted the one point five, and there are a few things we wanted to swap in and swap out, because those were board, the particular board cared about this a little more than that in its own judgment, you know what I mean? So that's where I would end, and then, then we go home.
Thank you, Jeff.
I just have a question for the administration.
Well, Zee's paying attention.
Is Nathan available?
Oh, he's coming right in, right here.
Oh, okay. So, and I guess it's a question for Yao, too. So if we give you a number like Jeff, Jeff just suggested, would the spending with that number, would you be spending on only these line items, selections from only these items, or are there other costs that you would, might spend on that are not on this, on this list?
We would, we would create a budget for you based on everything that we've shown you, that we're looking to invest.
Not wages.
With the baseline, well, I mean, we also, we have to have the baseline in there.
Baseline plus.
With the baseline.
But this would be over and over.
Right. So if you said, give us a scenario with four point seven million, we'd just give you this. We'd say, everything.
Right. If you said one point five, one, or point five, you would show what that would include. Gotcha. Thank you.
Excuse me, is this, is this a comprehensive list of the investment?
Which, it's a comprehensive list as requested by the staff. There's only one item I know of that's not requested by the staff, which is that high school science situation.
And, and IT, security audit. Was there anything else added at, at the table?
Okay.
Yeah?
I like Jeff's idea.
Yeah. So do you wanna talk about a low number and a high number, and maybe a middle number in between?
I think middle's important.
Totally fine. So if we do that, then we could.
Five hundred thousand, one million, one point five, two. I know what you said. I'm saying, that's the, that's the.
Right.
Range.
So let's start with the low number. Is, is, is anyone have any comments on five hundred thousand dollars of new investments?
Seems like a nice round number.
Sorry?
Seems like a nice round number.
I'm good with that.
I'm sorry. Oh, so we're talking about what?
Low number.
Yeah, three numbers. We're starting with the easiest one, the low.
The lowest.
Okay.
Gonna get a five hundred.
Seems a little low.
I think it's too low.
It's supposed to be.
But I think you need, I think you need, you need that number.
Based on just healthcare. Yeah.
Based on healthcare, but what, then we can build from that. Like, we don't have to, it doesn't have to be five hundred or a million or million and a half, it could be eight hundred thousand.
Not three hundred. So would this include the wage increase?
Yeah, it did.
This is the new, new investment.
Letting them sort of show us their priorities based on these parameters we set.
All right.
So I think that's a nice.
Five hundred, five hundred thousand.
Great.
Okay?
This is all new investment amount.
New investment amount. All right. High end. High end, so the highest we can go is four-point-six, probably a little higher, four-point-four, sorry, four-point-four-six, probably the BCL, and a little science teacher, and a little IT security, let's call it at least four-point-seven. Say four-point-seven is the max, anybody else?
I think they're being shy, let's give them ten.
I think it's-
Do we have, is it, is it possible to ballpark?
Two-point-five, high.
Yeah.
Two-point-five is high.
Highest, highest.
So, what do we think is the highest that we are, we want an estimate for, Mr. Pillsbury?
I think two-point-five is a high, but within that, I'd like to see some reductions in the current programs. And then I can see, and I really wanna emphasize, direct instruction, direct impact on students, because we know that once we, once we start to put on, we bond, you know, we bond, and we pay the construction cost, we're gonna be able, we're not gonna be able to be adding more instructional people. And so, we need to make sure that our, our schools are safe, and that our class, that our students are getting the, the instruction that they, that we need to have, a, a school system that we can be proud of, and say they're doing, we're doing the best we can for all, for all of our students. And I, I don't say, I say, all levels of students. That's our third priority.
Okay, thank you, so two-point-five, anybody?
With reductions.
With reductions, anybody else wanna put up another number?
But, just a clarification, if we're asking for two-point-five with reductions, then we're not really asking for two-point-five, we're asking for something lower as a high.
Keith, can we do a two-point-five?
Start with two-point-five without the reductions, and then just ask them as a courtesy to consider some-
I would just like to see reductions.
We did ask.
Point well taken.
I would like to see reductions, and maybe two-point-five is high with those reductions, then at that point, we can make them decisions that maybe we need to go lower.
Okay, Liz?
I, I wouldn't, I would not be comfortable going with that kind of a high.
Would you be comfortable with us giving that as a high estimate, or you wanna go higher with the high?
Or if we're only doing three numbers, then, to me, that's too high.
That would be the max.
That's too high.
Yeah.
Thank you. Who, can you throw out a number?
Because it doesn't include the wage, so for every one percent wage increase, it's five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, it would be on top of that.
So, then you'd look at three-point-five, really, if you were looking at investments plus wage.
Yeah, so I cannot go that high, and that's only a one percent wage increase.
All right, so you don't wanna see a two-point-five, but, I mean, again, we see what it does.
I mean, if two-point-five included the wage and benefits increase, sure.
But let's just talk new investments, so, your point's taken, so I'm not sure, anyone else?
Last year, we did two-point-three.
Right.
And that didn't include the reductions.
But the state, there were, tax rate was much lower, and there were a lot of other variables, but this year, we have a more constrained situation.
Well, we don't know that for sure yet.
We have a lower CLA, we don't have the Board of Finance support, as they stated at their last meeting, and we have a five-point-five state tax rate, and we have the healthcare costs that we're just negotiating.
Here's why I think we should do two-point-five as a high, even if you're uncomfortable with it, and if I were to, is because then we're gonna get a slate of reductions, i- if we do, so, anyway.
I'm just, I just wouldn't do that.
Yeah, fair enough, you have a right, yeah.
It's hypo- it's hypothetical, and they're gonna tie in all the tax stuff, and whatever is coming down the pipe with the healthcare, and we could just see what it looks like, if it looks like, I mean, you're just-
It's just too high for me, I've been doing this for six years.
Right, so, so one of the things, I think, is, if it's out of, if, if Liz is saying, I will never go for two-point-five, it's not worth the staff, and we all, and let's say we all agree, it's not worth the staff doing the work, right?
Yeah, exactly.
So, is anybody else uncomfortable?
No, I don't think that's correct, Mike, because it's majority, and so-
I'm just, it was a theoretical, I'm asking, about to ask, if you let me, is anybody else uncomfortable with that high of a number as the highest estimate?
I am.
Yeah, I think, I don't-
I don't think it's high, shall I speak? I don't think it's high enough, given this list of asks, I think, I wanna say four-point-five, okay? I think three-point-five is a huge reduction from what's being asked, and I also wanna make sure that the basic principles of what we're trying to support are not forgotten in the, in the final analysis. And that would be that the principals get what they've asked for, that we don't, we close the achievement gap by not cutting off the top end of performance, and that we provide challenging choice for students. Those are the three concepts that we agreed as a board to make our focus for this year. So, three-point-five, it seems a million dollars less than what's being asked, but we can't forget the priorities that we set as a board, and those are the three priorities.
Thank you.
Mike, I, I don't know that you've been given the chair gavel, but maybe you have.
Yeah, he has, right now, for communicating.
I have, so I'm gonna ask, anybody else have a comment on the, on the top, on the top estimate?
It seems to me like if they came back with two-point-five, and the numbers aligned in a magical way, and hey, maybe there's room to add on to the pile, then we could adjust the number upwards, if we felt good going in that direction. And then we have this third number, which I'm assuming is going to be substantially less than two-point-five, that will probably fall more into where Liz is comfortable, and maybe all bases are covered.
Okay, Jeff, oh, Claire?
Yeah, I think last year, the staff asked for five-point-three-seven in adds, we settled on two-point-three. I think it's, it's outlandish to think, and we heard it from, you know, Superintendent Bang, which is, if you ask, they're gonna give us quant, you know, items for, to, to add. I don't think it's fiscally responsible for us to look at this four-point-two-six, sorry, four-point-five, excuse me, and think that we are, you know, we're not serving the students of this district. This is a, similar to last year, five-point-three-seven was asked, we worked with two-point-three, and we were lucky with many variables that helped us with our taxpayers. I think it's, it's unrealistic, and actually fiscally irresponsible, if we don't look at that as a work in progress, but not, those are wants, but the district will tell us what they need, based on what we believe taxpayers can afford.
Where's your high?
So, I think when I look at where we've been, you know, from eight, eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand to two-point-three, the high being one-point-five, knowing that we have healthcare and wages, you know, new investments, maintaining teachers will be a big investment, but not, you know, not going too far over on that line as well, I think.
So, what do you think about two-point-five as the high?
Too high.
Point of order, I think we'll each be thinking, and everyone gets to go around, but at the end of the day, the only way that a board can express its voice to-
Majority.
Anyone, is, is to take even just a straw vote, you know what I mean? So, everyone's entitled, I grant that.
This is just discussion, this is just open discussion.
Jeff, this is just an open discussion, no one's making any decisions just yet. Jean?
I worry about, you know, what we established this year often is gonna be the base for next year, and that's when we're gonna have to start paying back the bond. So, thinking about what amount we come out with this year is gonna be, could be way scarier next year, so, I'm feeling inclined to ease into that transition, rather than have a last hurrah before it-
Meaning, lower than two-point-five as the top number.
Yeah.
Okay, Keith?
That's my top, that's not my low.
Mm-hmm.
So, and so, but, last year, you said it was over five million that they asked for. We actually added, when we finished, we actually added three-point-seven million, that, that's investments, but the total new money we put in was three-point-seven million.
With the surplus.
But that was with the, with the, of the other things that we had, with the contract. So, what I'm saying is that, I was, maybe I, maybe do, you know, I just think, it looks, it looks like we've been serious, looking at all the needs, and then we say, we can't afford some of these needs, and then the district sees us as starting to say, we need, we can't do this, coming down. I don't think we're gonna end up at two-point-five, but I'm thinking that it makes us look like we're really seriously looking at all the needs, and, and at the same time, we're, we're looking at areas where we could reduce the budget, certain, certain programs that may not be fully meeting our needs, or fully, you know, meeting our, our priorities.
So, we're at thirty-eight minutes, we're asked to spend forty minutes on this, but Nate's gonna give us a little leeway, right, Nate?
Yeah, you gotta finish.
So-
Could we vote on the middle?
So, my suggestion is, we, so I'll seem generally comfortable with five hundred K as the, as the floor, where, there's some discussion about two-point-five, my suggestion is, we take a straw poll on the top, and then we look at the middle. So, are there any opposition to that? Okay? So, straw poll, uh, what is the right way to do the straw poll, can I ask for hands?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, so, how many people are, are okay with two-point-five as the, as the top estimate? One, two, three, four, five, okay, opposed? One, two, three.
But his is higher, it doesn't matter.
I, I know, doesn't matter. So, we don't have agreement on the top, okay? So.
Well, if we go lower, we'll get more votes.
Well, so, then let's throw out more, like, we can throw a low, or we can throw a high.
Why don't we say?
Two.
Two?
And then vote.
Two is the top? Let's try it.
Let's try it.
Okay, quick, how many hands for two? Yay, yay for two, not a, I, one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, and nays, one, two, three, and a half, okay? So, two million it is as the top.
Are we still asking for reductions?
Yes.
Yes, we are always asking for it.
Yes, all right, so, I was just, yes, split the difference, someone else is-
One-point-eight-seven-five.
One-point-eight-seven-five, thank you, oh.
It's one and a quarter million. Or is it one, two-fifty?
What's, what's, what's in the middle of, what's in the middle between two million and half a million?
What Jeff just said.
One-point-two-five.
It's, it's one and a quarter.
Thank you. So, one, two, fifty. So, thoughts about, we've got five hundred K, one-point-two-five, and two, those are the three-
Scenarios.
Financial scenarios for new investments.
Right.
Discussion?
There was only a straw poll taken for the highest number, and not for the lowest?
Because I heard general agreement for the lowest.
We, we asked. Do you want lower?
No, I was just asking.
Do you want, I mean, that's an option.
I want high.
Would you like a straw poll to, to formalize that?
For higher?
Yes.
Okay, five hundred thousand as the low, hands to I? Okay.
Passed?
Yes, my estimation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for asking, so, and then the middle as one-point-two-five-zero, any discussion?
I would only suggest that it makes sense to do the middle, I just think, if you're gonna take a low and a high, a, a middle sort of makes sense.
Okay, straw poll on the middle, one-point-two-five, all in favor, raise your hands, opposed? Okay, so that's our three targets, two million, one-point-two-five, and five hundred. One minute and thirty-seven seconds.
Excellent, Bron, you wanna put something, put in the minutes?
I just did.
Okay, good. There you go.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good discussion.
The high was two-point-oh?
The height, yes, two, two flat, one-point, one million two-hundred-and-fifty thousand is in the middle, five hundred thousand dollars is the low.
We're gonna give you a, about five-minute break between here, and we're gonna go next door, do the quick exec session.
Yeah.
And then we'll come back, and one of the things I did wanna say is that, in terms of thinking about, Nate may have a question, too, Nate, I think you may have a question, in terms of, because you didn't do a, I'm thinking about the, the budget. The data that I gave you from the state, if you look at the numbers, we're not gonna be in the same situation as we were last year, I'm pretty confident, last year, we were in a pretty good situation, so, we're not gonna be able to buy as much, that's my prediction anyways, based on what I've read, as we did last year, right? So, expect that, that piece as well, too. The, something else that somebody said, that I wanted to bring you back to think about.
Board of Finance?
Paying bond?
Bond, that's it, bond, thank you. So, the last few years, we have asked the community for a bond, we did a capital bond, right, and we've done a high school bond, right? And, yes, we're gonna have to start paying some of that eventually, too, but also, hopefully, the board is thinking about the, having to eventually sell a budget, right? And then you go out there, the community say, hey, we've asked you for all this stuff last, and last year, we asked you for another bond, and, and what's gonna be the appetite of the community, that hopefully that you, you put that in your thinking, in terms of what realistically people are gonna see, and they'll be able to say, well, we're gonna give you a bond, ask you this, and are they gonna support that? So, those are pieces, hopefully, that you can think about. I do think that we can bring back for you the options that you asked for, so you can start playing with that, and you know, those of you who've gone through it before, it's not static, right? I mean, really, it's like, okay, now we've got some hard blocks to kind of play with, and you might wanna change some things, or aid some things, at the end of the day, you might settle on something and say, we could add another twenty thousand to get that item in there, and now it's, you know, whatever it may be, so, hopefully, hopefully, we'll do that. Look at our timelines and make sure we time it out, so we have enough time for that discussion, and be able to, to move forward. Nate, did you wanna ask, you've kind of said it, but you didn't say, and I wanted to give you an opportunity to put it in motion, because you kept talking about-
Yeah, I will make a motion.
Well, you kept talking about the reductions, but you didn't give us any, any direction in that.
Okay.
So, maybe why don't we give us, give them some direction around that, before they give us some direction on what you actually want us to do, because you've given us the three numbers, and I've heard people talk about reductions, but no one's really said exactly what you mean by that, and-
Could we potentially talk just briefly about our investments last year, and the number of personnel that we took on FTEs, and invested in the district, similar to, you know, pre-Ks, for example, nine new FTEs that were never in the district before, you know, no duplication of roles, special ed additions, you know, things that, you know, again, we have to remember that were added into the budget, so that when we look at those reduction areas, you know, or the fulfillment of potentially fulfilling all the pre-K, and the kindergarten pairs, what comes to mind is, you know, when you talk about reductions, also being able to highlight the areas that we did increase, you know, that we did support, does that make sense? So that it, it's not anything for this, you know, to get us to this year's number, but just to have, be cognizant of what we did, yes, yeah.
Last year, we supported some specific pieces.
So, the people who want pre-K don't get mad at us for buying a bus and not-
Yes.
Well, people are gonna get mad.
Do you mean no reductions of previously funded positions from last year?
Yes, like, so, we're not tripping, we're, we're maintaining what we added last year, we wouldn't be then reducing what we added last year, so we're conscientious about-
Yes, maintain.
So, those are, that's the kind of direction.
A solid footing.
Nate, I know, I wanna have a few words to help give the board a little bit of direction.
Yes.
I think what's helpful to us is, if, as, if there are areas where you feel, as a district, we are essentially providing more than we need to be, let's say, put it that way, you can pick your own word exactly, but the point is, where are those areas? People like talk about reductions, oh, let's make a reduction of ten thousand, a hundred thousand, ten million, whatever, it's like, what are the, what are the areas of service where you look around, you say, you know what, we're really generous in this area right now, and that's an area where if we have to step back, we should consider kind of stepping back from that, is there, you know, that, that's helpful for us, because then we can focus on, on those types of areas.
Can I also add that, when we're talking about reductions, the programmatic reductions, they're minute, the real money's in people, so if you're talking about reduction, we're gonna be cutting people, right? So, we need some clear direction around some of those areas, because, you know, if we're cutting people's operating budgets, that's not, that's not significant, it's gonna be minute, right? But if you've got real money, it's gonna be people.
Liz?
She was first.
Just the way we ask principals and, and leaders to give us recommendations for what they do need, I would think that they would be best suited to tell us, programming, whatever it be, what's not working, or what's not efficient, or cost-effective, or the strategy has, like, not sincerely helped close the achievement gap, things like that.
Liz?
I wouldn't wanna put building administrators on the spot that way, but what I would like to, as a- but what I would like to, as a more of a principal thing is, for example, we have this situation that came up tonight in the science department of the high school where you have, if you look at the number of students who enroll in classes and the flexibility of those instructors to instruct, there's a mismatch and there's one instructor who can only teach the AP Chem and you get like five kids enrolled. So I think that, you know, sad as it is, Republican as I sound, we should eliminate that position and reconfigure that department as an example so that we have, buy flexibility and not create a situation that hurts our students because of, you know, this weird thing that happened way long ago that no other district has. And along those lines of cutting, I think that the district should accelerate its conversations with the city to merge our property services functions over with attrition so that as people retire or leave, we work with the city to consolidate those kinds of custodial, vehicle maintenance, and other functions that can be performed by one municipal entity. Because our city tax rate's going up this year and for that reason, you're not going to see a lot of support on the city council for a school budget increase. Plus, our CLA is even lower this year, which means we now have a twelve percent gap to make up for until the city reassesses. So it's going to be a pretty rough year.
I'd also like to look at surrounding school districts. We had this discussion on a couple of these of what Winuski and South Burlington is doing to share some resources. I think we should, we need to start being a little bit creative on where we can share some resources. So if there's only four people enrolled in AP Chem and they have three and we have, you know, Winuski has two, how do we share the resources? That is probably with the principals of the school, so using them to figure those out. But I do feel like we have these great resources that we're all doing it alone in each of these bubbles and silos. So anywhere we can find shared resources would be helpful.
Yeah, and piggyback, the data conversation was like that, data support. Can we all share, procure a data support together?
And all those things, I know, I mean, we can, we'll have discussions about internally, but I'll just caution you right now, generally those type of things, good idea, it's worth trying to find the time to really pursue them, difficult to do in a matter of a few weeks and bank on those savings, right? I wouldn't like to be in a position where we're like, we're going to save half a million dollars by, you know, partnering with the city this coming fiscal year as opposed to, we're going to make it a point that over the next year, we're going to explore that topic. So a year from now, we can really dig in. But that would be kind of like, I feel like the board's saying, this is one of our goals. Let's like make it happen over the next year so we're ready. It's harder to kind of bank significant savings on that kind of speculative collaboration.
So along those lines, another idea was rather than adding like all these individual costs, can you just add like fifty thousand to the contingency? Can we do like a three hundred and fifty contingency or four hundred thousand contingency? So you have the flexibility for like fifteen thousand dollars here and there.
Want to increase the contingency?
Yeah, so that instead of like throwing money at all these line items that may or may not happen, may or may not be needed, or then you have time to talk about shared procurement of consulting services, you know, that's another way to go about it, rather than.
If people are comfortable with that, then increase in the contingency if we do that.
Or it may be that people say, leave the contingency three hundred thousand and take all that out of there or something. But that means the board can't go around adding costs during the year because that's where it's coming from.
And I would second what some of my fellow commissioners said about asking the, the principals on reductions, right? This is budget, this is how you do budget, right? You want something more, a lot of times you got to find that savings in your own department. That's how I've been brought up and I know it's hard to ask and I know it's people's lives.
It's not hard, it's not, we've done it every year. What we need is for the board to be able to support whatever comes forward then. Because the reality is, as I said, if you want real dollars, it's going to have to be people. And that means people are going to be displaced, people are going to be upset, some people are not going to like that. People are going to come back and say, why are you taking away this or taking away that? So the board needs to be prepared to defend that.
A concrete example would be like the library para-reduction that we had a few years ago. That was a result of going to principals and saying, of all the things, what would you give up? And that was the answer. And then based on, you know, kind of.
Public outcry.
The, the response, right, that was received, those went back in. So you can do that, you can yoyo back and forth and take them away and put them back in, but.
Oh, yeah, cut the path off the tail end of it.
Yeah, same thing, okay, all right.
So that's, I mean, that's the reality of it, that's why I wish that we need some direction, something that you're comfortable with. Because those times bringing something up and then if people are going to protest it and we're going to put it back and then we, then we're going to have a hard time.
That's the risk that might happen. I think that's going to happen, right? Because we just asked you to bring us reductions and you're going to bring it and we're going to be like, whoa, why are you doing that, right? And that's just, I think that's the way it's going to play out.
I think we.
Hold on a sec.
Well, we are the stakeholders and the city taxpayers. When they see that they, there's something that you're proposing that they don't, that don't support and we put it back in, that gives support to the district, I think it's a positive thing. I think it's a very positive thing that we, we look seriously what we, and then people say, no, we need, we get a. I, I think that's a very positive thing that makes people support the school district more.
Jeff?
I, I was going to suggest that be careful what you ask and how you ask it of the administrators. And I am only speaking for myself, but I do believe I, a few others on the commission share this, that we care deeply about direct instruction, direct services, programming that works. Don't just say, bring me a head, I need a head. But just, if there's a head that's not working, you know what I mean?
I think they would know, yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, but I think we have to be careful about that.
We don't just ask them to bring us a head.
Or maybe some more preventative approach where, you know, at one point we had a lot of people from maintenance out on comp time because of injury and stuff like that. Is there something that needs to be done as far as practices to, because that was, that was a large expense?
Just to.
Yep, go ahead.
Just to reiterate that any kind of reduction in force, when you talk about people, should not be, for many reasons, personnel involved in working directly with students.
Okay.
Is that, I mean, again, if we can.
What's the, what's the, what's the question?
They're just asking for direction.
Yeah, no, I'm asking, yeah, that's the direction.
If it has to be personnel. I totally hear that, I want to hear what other board members have to say about that. Mr. Pillsbury, do you want to?
Well, the first thing I said was.
Right, you're in the same mindset, I just want to make sure.
I didn't say exactly that, I said we need to make sure that we have, that our students get the instruction that they need that we have.
Okay, anybody else comment on Mr. Carey's?
Well, I'm of a different mind. I mean, I think it's, should be data-driven and we, you know, we need, in order for direct instruction to actually happen, there's a lot of behavior support that's needed. So, you know, sometimes it's bodies in the classroom, not, you know, teachers.
But the behavior support that we're asking for is involv, is directly involved with students.
Well, if you're talking, I mean, almost everybody's directly involved with students except admin and custodians.
There are lots of people who aren't.
Well, then you know something.
Jean?
I don't want to drop a big bump, but the hearing about how EL students, it takes them more than four years to graduate, you know, behavioral, kids who are struggling, it often takes more than four years. The longer they are matriculating, the more it's costing the district. So that would be another efficient approach. If there's more behavioral specialists, maybe we're preventing these children from being in the, you know, being in high school for six years.
All right, so, does anybody want to support what Mr. Carey said?
I thought we've heard it several times.
Administration is just hearing different opinions.
We've heard it several times.
Consensus.
Do you have clarity?
I, I, I would love some more clarity because I don't, I, you want me to go to the principals and say, give me some reductions?
Are there some?
Okay, so that's different, okay, so you're saying, all right, so they, I could ask Principal A and they might say, nope, I need more, there's nothing that I can give up. Then I come back and say, I didn't get anything from that, is that what you're saying?
Or hi, yes, hypothetically, Mrs. Principal.
Well, that's fine, that's okay, then that's good, okay.
Well, you know, think a little harder.
I think we, I think we don't have to articulate, I mean, I get it, I think, don't you agree?
Who are you mad at today?
You're saying that we're just suggesting that they look for savings, not, we're not directing them to, to get savings.
I think what you're suggesting is unless we direct it, we're not going to get any savings. In other words, they're never going to say. Are there any?
So, so I have a phrase here that I wrote down. All scenarios must include proposals for reductions of currently budgeted items.
I think you're mixing and matching, I think, that wasn't the point that Yao and Nate were looking at. The board can change that, but they're saying, give us three scenarios of the ads and then they'll make the hard choices of the cuts among the ads. And then separately, we're asking, give us some suggested cuts that will help make things even nicer in terms of tax increase.
So I'd say, right, we've heard like that we should, which is what we would normally do, we would go out to directors and principals and so forth and say, you know, okay, we need to have a conversation about things that we could give up in order to afford some of these new investments, right? So if you'd say, well, it's, it's worth it to me to get X to give up Y, that's the kind of like feedback we want from them, I think, based on what I'm hearing. But the more restrictions we put around that, the less obviously they're going to be able to come up with. That's why I think sometimes it's helpful, if you have a specific area where like we offer too much service in this area, look at that area in particular, that's helpful to us because we get a sense of, number one, board thinks we already are very generous in that area. And then we can really start drilling out and saying, well, what, what would we have to give up?
I, I know that you, I know that you've asked that and I think some board members have come up with some ideas. But I think that the majority of the board, what I heard is that we're looking for you to come up with those proposals and bring those tops.
I mean, when we looked at the original budget, and I know Commissioner Sowers had done that, you know, we looked at travel conferences, eighty-three thousand, hundred sixty, other professional services, three point five million, four point seven million, you know, that don't involve direct instruction, professional education, administrative services, interest versus redemption, principal, you know, writing those down, I guess the, you know, we could sit with you and look at some of those costs that aren't principal-related. Does that make sense, or?
You're talking about the budget lines.
Not the budget lines, but you know, if it's not school-based spending, because we know school-based, we don't know any school that's living really, you know.
Example would be if you, if, just to see if I understand, like if you're saying, you know, we think that in general, professional development, where we do more than enough professional development, right? Whether people are going to conferences, bringing trainers in, whatever it is, we think we should do less professional development. That would at least help focus our thinking around what those reductions are and would help us communicate to principals and to directors around this is a particular area where board thinks there's an opportunity to, to reduce.
Liz?
Well, yeah, it comes at a cost.
So I'm not personally asking for reductions that you show us. I mean, I know there's retirement savings, the dollar yield can yield more, so some of the increases can be made up from the dollar yield. And there's, you know, last year you reduced half a million in central office. You might not be able to do that this year, but you might be able to keep the professional development level funded and include a new cost. So there's a lot of different ways of adding costs besides just asking principals to cut their anemic budgets that I would never want to ask a principal to cut because we already have a difficult environment enough in the schools. There's a lot of other district costs. And so as people become more familiar with the state ed formula and the dynamics of the budget, there's other ways of adding costs besides reductions. It's not a one-for-one. Last year, we only reduced eight hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, but yet we gained whatever, two point three. So I'm not asking for reductions other than reconfiguring the science department if you feel like this whole science thing is really a problem, which I don't think it is yet. We don't have enough data, we haven't been seeing it long enough. And the other suggestion I had was like Horizons and On Top need another administrator and maybe we don't need a principal-principles, maybe that's not netting the perceived benefit. So maybe it's just a one-for-one, you know, there's a lot of things that can be done in the budget besides this eighty-five million dollar budget, people like, we're talking about two percent of it. So I would just ask everybody to kind of breathe and just let them do their job.
I just wanted to ask about the timeline of the meeting tonight because the forty minutes was over a long time ago and I'd like to propose a break. We've been talking about this for three hours.
So I will put forward, you have one last short?
I was going to say that we moved, we, a motion to move to executive session after said break.
Yep, so I have a, do you need a motion in order to go forward?
No, I just.
Okay.
As long as we've got the, the three areas and we've heard your comments.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher, for managing that dialogue and everybody. So we'll, at this point, move to executive session to discuss, sorry, I have it.
Yep, I have it. So I move to move into executive session under Vermont statute three one three A, one B in order to discuss target wage increases for our collective bargaining agreements as it relates to our FY twenty-one budget planning.
Thank you. You have a second?
Nicely done, Mike.
Do you have a motion for a second?
Second.
Alts in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, we'll move to executive session, which will hopefully be fifteen minutes.
So when, are we taking a break?